Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, July 11th, 2022. If you would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anybody here for open forum?
Sue Gilpatrick, Town Clerk.
I just wanted to do a quick reminder about dog licensing. We're in the process right now. The dog licensing period is July 1st to June 30th. Late fees will be assessed as of September 1st, so you want to avoid that at all possible cost. The online portal is open. You can send in with the slip that was on the bottom of your letter with the check on itself addressed stamped envelope, or you can come in person and visit us at the counter. We'll be more than happy to take care of you.
Great.
And that's it. Have a great summer and license your dog.
Thank you.
Are we doing so fast?
We're about halfway there. We're a little over 1,100 and we have between 2,400 and 2,500 dogs.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum? All right, then we will close open forum and move to appointments. Mary Waldron is here from Old Colony Planning Council for an update. Come on up and have a seat.
Welcome, Mary.
Thank you, everybody, and thanks for the invite. For the record, my name's Mary Waldron. I'm the Executive Director of the Old Colony Planning Council. We are the regional planning agency for this region and encompasses 17 communities. And today for an update about what we're doing, I think the first and foremost is that over the last couple of years, we certainly have been pivoting along with you and many others. I just want to give a shout out to the Town Clerk for their work because we often give the notices and they get posted immediately, which is helpful for getting word out during these times. But we recently provided an annual report, and I have some copies here. We are lucky to have the delegate in terms of Peter Spigone, but also we have John Hayes, and it's great to be working with both of them as well as with the community. I'm excited to know that upcoming we'll have a road safety audit. Our Transportation Department will be here taking a look at the intersection that I just came through and tried to navigate without getting, but it is an important one. And before working at Old Colony Planning Council, I used to work at Bridgewater State University and would often come this way as well and know what the kind of the bottleneck is. But we had a preliminary office meeting today. We talked about where sidewalks are located, but we know the school is here and the town is here and there's activity. So we'll be digging in deep and continue to work with the town, the public officials, the DPW, just about looking for ways, short-term, inexpensive ways, as well as others that we could be working with either applying for funding from the state or potentially the federal government. The other piece is that we have an arm of our organization called the Area Agency on Aging. We work closely with the Council on Aging and providing funding. Old Colony Elder Services, which we sound very much alike, but we're in two different organizations, but we receive the funding from the federal government and we work with our 23 communities in the Council on Aging to provide food services as well as legal services and a whole host of things. Our website is being updated. It's going to be more user-friendly. We've had a new logo that's come into play. We talk about our sustainability along with planning, economic development, a whole housing production plans, you name it. We really are under a whole array of different items. So, you know, it's important for the town to be presenting your priorities on a yearly basis and sometimes more than that. We do meet with the town officials. We meet with Charlie. Happy to be had worked with Charlie when he was in Halifax and so happy to be that he's here in East Bridgewater. He's very knowledgeable and can navigate. He can navigate through the Suez Canal and continue to keep working forward because you, I know it, but it's true.
Can you hear that line?
No, but we probably use it.
I probably could do it better than that guy.
Much smaller than that. But it's true in terms of the experience that he has, and he knows the staff and he knows what, you know, he can pick up the phone, not just to me, but to the whole staff. We have 22 staff members at Old Colony Planning Council, and each one of them provide a great resource to our many communities. One in particular is Dottie Fujinetti, who is a select board and chair of the select board in Easton. And it's helpful to have her bring her experience as a select board to us because sometimes we're a little bit of bookworms that we just kind of say, well, here's what the study says, and then we have her capabilities as well as others. Here's the reality and how we need to work. So I will leave these reports with you. Also, we provide a community profile. We take data. I'll get that sent over to Charlie so he can present, but we follow your demographics. We see where things are. We know where challenges are. We're kind of a databank, if you will, of past reports, but we also don't want to rest on where those, where that data is, particularly when we know where the town would like to take it, whether it's in economic development or even if it's just staying status quo, if that's what it is and that's where your direction is, then we need to be able to find the ways to do that. And most recently, I've had the pleasure of working with both David and Charlie and with Peter in terms of working with the city of Brockton. So I used to be the former Chief of Staff to the Mayor of Brockton and having to help navigate some of its waters, I will leave it at that, maybe not the Suez Canal, but certainly some waters to navigate.
Or rapids.
Or heavy rapids. But in the end, and I, you know, having that agreement in terms of having to have that relationship. So I consider Old Colony Planning Council sort of as the Switzerland of the region where we really are. We don't play into that piece in terms of politics. We look at what's good for our communities and be a convener when it's sometimes difficult to pick up that phone either way, from whether it's the city of Brockton picking up the phone to a smaller town, or whether it's the smaller town and how to approach other communities. So we have, when we get our website, we also have a newsletter that we put out twice a month. It's filled with grant opportunities. There was so much that we do. When I first applied for this job, when it was Pat Chiamella, Pat Chiamella had worked for Old Colony Planning Council for over 40 years, an incredible person who cared deeply about this region and filling his shoes have been quite difficult in many ways because of the depth of his information. So utilizing that and taking it into a new world where we are, we work remote. So our staff are on flex schedules, but they put in the same amount of hours, if not more, by working in a flex schedule. So our website is www.ocpcrpa.org, and I just love the opportunity to come before you to talk about all the great things we're doing, and we look forward to accomplishing more with the town of East Bridgewater.
Great. Thank you. I think that everybody in this room and everybody who might be watching will be very interested to see what your thoughts are on the intersection that we all know and love so well.
And that's also, by itself, that's going to be a major project to look at that, but you're also going to be assisting the towns all the way from Bridgewater on up to look at Route 18 as a whole corridor during the next, I mean, we're talking not so much blue sky, but that is a multi-multi-year idea in the sense of you got to get the data, you got to get testimony, experiences from people who live here, who work here, who travel along Route 18, look at all those intersections, look everything up, and then start thinking, what could we be doing to make that a more attractive corridor, not just for the vehicles there, but for the people in the area?
I think that is such a critical piece in terms of Route 18. So there is, as Charlie said, the corridor study. The meeting's going to be public. I mean, it's a public meeting. We'll make sure that we get it to everyone, and certainly we have a public hearing time where people can solicit their comments. So it's not only anecdotal, but it really is the police and the fire and the DPW as well as schools. And one of the things, when we talked about it this morning with my staff, we talked about, you know, has there been a program, the Safe Schools, Safe Schools, Safe Roots, excuse me, Safe Roots to School program? And I know that there had been some initial, but maybe to really enlighten that. So they will be invited. The state will be coming, Mass DOT comes along the way. We invite state officials because sometimes if there are Mass Works applications, John, and other kind of applications that are around, that we certainly want to be able to stay, that's the point, that we're all on the same page, working for the same effort. And so if that corridor is done, and this is an important piece, this intersection is an important piece to it, then we need to kind of deal with those again. We'll look for those short-term, less expensive resolution, but then to work to continue to find the findings and whether it's Economic Development Administration from federal government or whether it's from the state, or, you know, we help to unturn those rocks and not just only to unturn them, but really to do some hand-holding to help apply for them.
David?
Again, I can't thank you, your staff, and everyone for working with Brockton for the Sewerage District. We've been talking about that, I think, I'm not going to say before I was born, because that was a long time ago.
That was really long time ago.
We've been doing that for at least 25 years, trying to do something there along with this intersection at the center of town. We've asked the state to do that time and time again, and they came back, and this is what we have. That was their solution. So we're looking forward to continuing that.
You know, and I think, David, to your point, and Charlie's and others, it really is important to keep the conversation going.
Absolutely.
It really is important to have a member of the select board to be part of our OCPC board, so you see what other communities are doing and you hear, and when we report out and get staff reports, they're, quite frankly, there is so much information that it's almost an overload, but let's tick off together some priorities, and that's where we have met with Charlie and utilizing Charlie's skills to say, here's our top five priorities and where we want to focus on. We may not get to 21 or 22, but let's work on those top priorities and then revisit it again another six months or another year. But, you know, there's, again, there's lots of different ways and connective, you know, connecting the dots together to accomplish what needs to be done for the town.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
They do, I want to make a couple of points. One is you do go beyond transportation. For instance, you were instrumental, the staff there, in helping the town submit the Green Communities application, or waiting to get official word as to whether or not we're going to be able to participate. I'm hoping to hear fairly soon, but we would never have gone that application in without you all. And then there are other projects we may be working with you by the DLTA program, as an example.
Correct.
And then even small transportation, I mean, we're going to be looking at Central Street and the truck traffic along that in a few months when school opens up and we can get counts and see again, are there measures we could be taking?
My staff gave me a whole list. I said, you know, of all the things, because I know when I see them come by, but I said, you know, all of the items that, you know, Charlie talked about in terms of green communities. It's the world of today in terms of, you know, ways to help protect this environment, but it's also just ways that there's also additional fundings that relieves some of the local costs that a state grant can apply for. And in the times when everybody says the grant monies have dried up, I think there's a piece of that, but we will, like I said, looking for private and public funds and ways to make things happen. It is a, it's been a great opportunity. You mentioned DLTA. What Old Colony Planning Council is good for is acronyms, but it's called the District Local Technical Assistance Program. We, Old Colony Planning Council, are the recipient of the funds from the state, and then we solicit out to our communities for ideas. So there are some best practices that are out there that our staff worked on, an age-friendly community for the town of Easton, and we're now working with the town, I believe, Duxbury and Plymouth is going that way. So what does that mean? It just means that if we're going to continue to have our residents, when you're aging out, I'm a baby boomer, looking to not retire yet, but, you know, you want to either stay in place or have communities that you can make them feel comfortable. And sometimes that means having sidewalks that you can utilize a wheelchair or just even having to be able to have sight, you know, signs that are of larger letters. So what I'll have Joanne do tomorrow is to send along that age-friendly that was done in Easton. It's been brought up to the state as being a model to be looked at. But those are the things that we'd like to really kind of share and what we've been doing, what we started last year and we're going to continue this year, is that instead of having a big formal kind of annual meeting, what we are doing is just prior to, just sort of like beginning of December, end of November, beginning of December, we call it an expo, and it gives a chance for all the staff and for you to interact with us and for you to see what others are doing. It's great. I smiled after last year's because so many things got accomplished and it's, you know, select board members talking to other select boards or talking to town managers, and so we're going to continue to provide that kind of networking amongst the communities so then we can then also share also some of the best practices. So I know there's a lot more. I could probably talk for way too long and you don't have, and I promise not to hold anybody up.
That was my next question. When's your next expo? Is that what's fantastic?
Wasn't that great?
It was.
So what we try to do is hold it in a centrally located. So just for those that don't know, the 17 communities start with Stoughton in Easton, covers all the Bridgewater's and goes to Plymouth, Plimpton, Hanover, Hanson, Pembroke. I can just, you can just imagine the 17. And we try to hold it in a central location. So we're looking at the dates right now that will be sent out, and we do invite really not just only the select board, but if there's town committees that you'd like to connect with other conservation committee, commission members or historical, you know, we'll be working with Preservation Massachusetts about identifying historical locations to try to preserve them and not see them be knocked down, a lot of those kind of things. But I'll get to the dates, and I'm glad that you attended last year, David, and I really think that that's another way of us, all of us, our board members know what the staff's doing, but also our communities. And certainly if there's some best practices that you see, listen, if there's something that's going on in another community, I'm pretty competitive. I would like to try to find ways to do what they do. But we own a drone, and both Peter and John saw it in flight. We utilize it for lots of different things, and while I know that, leave you have a drone, but we have three staff members who are pilots, certified pilots, and can be utilized again for DPW, police, fire, or just even so you want to do a present.
Bicentennial Committee?
Yep.
I feel like there's something the bicentennial committee could maybe come up with to do.
So please utilize that. It's paid for by Mass DOT funds, and we can stretch that in terms of, but certainly to do a flyover and to utilize that in a video or anything along those lines.
Yeah, that would be kind of cool.
Yeah. So again, we love, we really, I've really appreciated the opportunity to work directly with John and with Peter. There's been a couple of long meetings we've been on about certain projects, but I think that's the point, is that we're not going away. We continue to stay vigilant and standing by the side of the town and find ways to work on your priorities and perhaps that we can figure out some other ways that we can collaborate.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary. Again, tremendous.
Yeah, thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. I will leave these with Charlie, and if other documents are needed, I'll just email them to you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to our joint meeting with Planning Board. Roy, there you are. Where is he? Do you want to come up? And then you can open your meeting, and then we can move on with the business.
Yeah, I'll open our meeting. We'll call it 6:49 PM.
Great.
This is an official joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen for the Planning Board. There's currently six regular members of the Planning Board present. Lindy Snow, who's the member who's, a former member, who's asked to be considered for an associate membership, is also here tonight, so I'll declare the Planning Board meeting open at 6:50 PM.
Okay. And you want to discuss appointing Lindy back as an associate member? Lindy, do you want to just come up and?
If I could just for a second.
Of course.
I want to officially and publicly thank Lindy for his many years of service on the Planning Board.
Many.
I also want to thank him for his willingness to continue to serve as an associate member when we have those times when we need an associate member present so we can do our business, so.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Anything you want to add or say why you want to come back for more?
18 years, I guess.
18 to 19 years now, so I had to come back.
Okay.
Good for you. I know how that works.
Any questions?
No, I think it's great. Thank you for coming back, Lindsay. We can't replace 17 or 18 years' experience. So thank you.
Yep. If you want to do your motion, and then we'll do ours.
So I'll make a motion on behalf of the Planning Board that we appoint Lindy Snow as an associate member, starting as of his swearing-in.
Give me a second.
Good. So.
You need to, your vote?
Do we need any further discussion? We said, all those in favor of the motion, then say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Great.
I think we should show that as six in favor and none opposed of all the regular member of the Planning Board.
Perfect.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen appoint Lindsay Snow for an associate member of the Planning Board effective immediately.
Second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Know you'll be in.
I just have to say one thing to you. You ran along and wanted me to say hi to you.
Lana misses you very much.
I know. As I've always said, it's the people that I miss.
Always. Anytime you leave a position where you've been happy.
Not as happy as here, though.
Never will be as happy as here. All right.
Just figure out that.
I think officially we should close our meeting.
Yeah, you're done.
Yes, you should.
So I think we can declare the meeting closed at 6:50.
Might be the shortest meeting on record, Roy. All right, our next joint meeting is with FinCom to review and approve Chapter 44, Section 33b transfers. Hello, Dan and Lucia.
Hello.
Welcome. This is it for us.
Okay, so we will open the joint meeting of the Finance Committee with the Board of Selectmen at 6:52. We have two items tonight. One is a reserve fund transfer and then year-end transfers. So Lucia will make the first motion.
I make a motion to transfer $9,000 to be transferred to supplies, bags, and stickers.
For the DPW.
For the DPW.
So we have a motion to transfer $9,000. Second, Dr. Joe, any discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Aye. Passes four to zero.
And now do we vote on that one? Yes.
I'll make a motion to do the same.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That's officially.
Year-end transfers. You did just say yes.
All on recorders.
So I make a motion to transfer.
To make a motion to fulfill the year-end transfers.
Fulfill the year-end transfers. Ready?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to fulfill the year-end transfers as printed.
We have a motion for the year-end transfers as printed, second by Joe. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes four to zero.
Same motion.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
And we will adjourn the Finance Committee meeting at 6:50.
Do you, do you have any reserve fund transfers or any?
There was one.
That was it?
That's it, right?
So we can adjourn at 6:53. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We just have to sign. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Great. No, good job. Thank you. All right. That is it for our meetings and appointments, so we will move on to action items.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 13th, 2022, 6:00 PM, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve but not release, and it's of the June 13th, 2022, 6:55, Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're passing over three and four.
All right. You all have a good summer.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Fred Tully with regret as the plumbing and gas inspector for the town of East Bridgewater effective July 7th, 2022.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to thank Fred for 30-plus years of service for the town of East Bridgewater and wish him well in his future endeavors.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I vote to approve the request of the Director of Assessants for a step increase in the principal clerk position.
You want to specify what we're doing. Since what step?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
Paul?
Oh, sorry.
Pay attention.
Listen, our easement's on the.
The new lady's here.
Talk about your request for the step increase.
So I'm almost there. I have the last, my staff moved up. They each went to a different, they stepped up, so now we're advertising for a senior clerk. But when you read these, you read the senior clerk, the principal clerk, and the admin and the rates, in general, the beginning rate is like, there's a certain amount, like, say, $3 difference, difference, difference. So if you bring someone up, you slide them over and you even go up one, it doesn't make, it doesn't, you know what I mean? It doesn't make sense. I know this is all being like, kind of looked at with the compensation study and things like that, but I just wanted to bring her to that, kind of get into that line of, so it would be up to a higher rate than just moving over and going up one.
So Paul, for the record, what's the, which step and at what rate?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the person that we're doing this for?
Sheila DeSilva, and it would be step four, which is about the.
Under a principal clerk position?
Yeah, in the principal clerk position.
And what's the rate?
2503.
Am I reading this incorrectly?
Okay. But the email says something different.
I'm reading it's off of the principal clerk, step three at 2433.
Oh, step three?
Step three at 2433 per hour is what you said in the email that you sent to Rebecca.
When I went and did all my, like, was looking at the actual amounts and where, you know, when I did my percentages and stuff, then it came to the four fit that increase in the things. But if it creates problems and I've already.
No, I'm just going by what's printed here.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that we have it correct.
We went with three.
It's up to you, whatever you want to request, and then up to the budget.
I'd like to do the four, and then that's it. And then the senior one, we're bringing in at the first one. No more. And we're still, I'm still well ahead in my budget.
Okay.
By quite a bit, and I'm going to focus on really doing some training for the new person that comes in.
Okay. I don't have an issue with it if it's in the budget.
What's the hourly for step four?
2503.
Okay.
And she's been here for eight years, does a great job for me, like all the inspections and stuff.
Charlie, anything? David?
What's that?
All right. Uh, there's no further discussion. All in favor of the step increase for the principal clerk position, Sheila DeSilva, say aye.
Step four at twenty-five oh three.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, I make a motion to review and vote on the request of the town of East Bridgewater to waive any right of first refusal of the land to be conveyed to Daniel J. Sullivan.
Second.
So this is a situation where they want to take a small portion of a much larger lot. I think it's one acre to move into, add to an existing house lot. The town has no interest in that one acre, as it is, having gotten information from Paula's office and from the Concom agent, probably not interested in the larger parcel either because according to the wetlands map, it's mostly what to begin with.
Okay.
So, but under Chapter sixty-one A, if someone's taking the property out of, out of, out of chapter, then they have to offer it to the town for sale. The town can choose to accept or pass over the ability to purchase the parcel. Everyone's recommendation at this point is to pass over.
Okay. All right. David, any discussion?
No.
I agree to pass over.
Hearing no further discussion. All in favor of waiving our right of first refusal, say aye.
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 Madam Chair.
Bye now.
I make a motion to review and possible vote on the surplus, eight ranges of metal shelving and accompanying wooden end caps.
This is from the library. They wanted the property to be declared surplus. It has to go through the board to officially be declared surplus. We did reach out, send a letter, we sent out a note to, or the library did, to the departments asking if there was any interest, and it doesn't fit anybody's bill. If the board does this tonight, then I'll contact the library and we'll see about, just not a bid in the, you know, newspaper or something like that, but we'll put something up on the website saying if you're interested in purchasing these, for whatever reason, we're accepting bids up to a certain date. Make sure it's transparent as possible about any sale.
As is.
Definitely as is. No warranties, no guarantees.
Is that gone the next month?
Somebody might be setting up a home library. You never know. Don't tell my husband.
That'd be your.
She's going to be there with a trash.
I know, yeah. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I motion to approve Amendment Two to agreement for engineering services by, in between the town of East Bridgewater and Western and Sampson Engineering, Inc., to further development and refinement of the Brockton Sewer Connection feasibility study.
Second. Any discussion?
This would move, sorry, just move the next series of funding for Western Sampson's work.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I make a motion to review and approve I T managed services contract for the period of July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Ryan, is there anything you need to say?
Unless the board wishes me to speak on it.
So three-year contract. It's via state contracts, so we didn't have to go out for normal procurement. The only thing is, we're going to be crossing out a section about automatic renewal. We talked to council about that, and that's going to get dropped out, and the company knows that, and there's no problem with this. What this is, is that obviously Ryan can't stay awake and be here one hundred and sixty-eight hours a day.
Why?
Or either.
I don't know why not.
So we, we do need to have some, we do need to have a company monitor our I T infrastructure, make sure if there's any alerts that have to, you know, basically, did the alarm go off, did someone start narking at our door and everything like that? I'll make sure everything is up and running. This is what this company does for us. It's an essential service. If you're going to be running an I T operation the size we do these years.
And what was the quote amount?
Ninety-four thousand.
Over the, over the course of the three years.
Yes.
Okay, great. Any more discussion?
Good.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, a motion to review and possibly approve the APFAHONS, which we have in front of us.
Second. Discussion.
So thankfully Rebecca put this together for the in-house applications. So this is a much simpler form with different requirements, but would be used for departments, boards, committees, to send in possible projects and funding via ARPA. There's also how, I stole this, I'll say literally I stole it.
We use plagiarized.
Plagiarized, borrowed, did not reinvent the wheel.
Followed the best practices.
But I had gone searching for one that was in a smaller community like ours that was for possible grants for outside organizations. So businesses, nonprofits, groups of individuals, whatever, for funding under ARPA. And Hubbardson had a very nice setup for that, so I changed some of the wording. Obviously, it reflects the situation in East Bridgewater, but pretty much left that as is. We are going to be requiring more details than we would under the department form, simply because this is going to be another, outside organization, and we need more information about that organization. If the fire department or the recreation commission submits a grant proposal, well, we already know them. We don't need that information. But we'll need that additional information, especially because eventually we're going to get audited on everything we do. I did not set any date on the board could discuss that as to whether a month from now, for instance, is a reasonable amount of time to be accepting applications. I did note that depends on, some communities are doing this on a phase basis. What I wanted to see was first to see what applications we got in, both from departments and from the outside, before saying we, whether we would be going out some grant opportunities sometime later, whether it's this year or in future years. But we'll see what we get in first. But I figure a month should be about long enough for everybody to reply for it. You can make it a little bit longer if you wanted to since it's summer.
I was thinking, you know, the week after Labor Day or something, only because there's just so much, including the people on the APRA committee.
Yeah, I would, I would be for that, too.
Okay.
This form looks good. Seems like it's covered a lot, and it should be helpful for them in terms of reviewing proposals and, you know, assigning value.
And I'll be.
In a concrete way instead of a subjective way.
And are the APRA committees meeting tomorrow? I'll be, be there for the meeting and answer questions about the process and the forms and such.
Okay.
Why don't we make the deadline there, they haven't set their schedule up yet, but for their meeting in September.
Okay. I'll talk with them tomorrow, and they can pick a date, and we'll go from there.
Okay, very good.
So is the board to approve?
Do you want to approve the forms now, or do you want to wait until September?
I think we approved.
The forms, because I need the forms so that people can submit the applications.
No further discussion. All in favor of the APRA forms, say aye.
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 Did I miss anything?
John, do we need to get to yours, the last one?
No, I told you to watch.
You what?
Told you to watch.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve an event permit for Chuck Corin of the Kiwanis Club of East Bridgewater for the use of the town common to display American flags for two weeks to honor veterans. Field of Flags, October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two through November twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Any discussion?
That's just a great event every year. It looks fantastic when they set that up.
Yep. Thanks, Chuck. All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the request of Deanna Lepine of East Bridgewater Community Gardens for the use of Satchin Rock Farm on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two for Harvest Fest from ten A M. to one P M.
Second. Any discussion?
Just want to make sure that the function coordinator down at Satchin knows that that day will be tied up.
There's a function at two-thirty, so they just have to be out by two.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the event permit from Nicole Olivera of Boosters for the use of the town common for a Viking movie night on September twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, from four P M. to six P M.
Ten P M.
Ten P M.
Second. Any discussion? Are they showing a Viking movie, or is it a Viking movie? Because I don't know if Viking movies, you know.
No, it's not Viking.
Rated G.
Viking sports parents or something like that.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
I want to tame your dragon.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the request of Didi Rogers.
Delfina.
Of the American Legion Post fifty-one for the use of the town common for Memorial Day observance on Monday, May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, from nine A M. to twelve P M.
Second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Didi, she likes to plan ahead.
She does.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the request of Didi Rogers of the American Legion Post ninety-one for the use of the town common for a flag ceremony to burn old and no longer usable United States flags on Sunday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-three, from six P M. to nine P eight, P M., rain date, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the request of Didi Rogers for the American Legion Post ninety-one for the use of the town common in commemoration of the two-hundredth anniversary of East Bridgewater, which will include a concert Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, three P M. to ten P M., rain date, Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Any discussion?
We're also working on possibly having a, that's anyone but the Ellen that does.
Oh, good, because that's my wedding anniversary.
We know that. We heard it this year. Don't need to hear it again. We're also trying to get to see if we can have fireworks that evening.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the application for one-day liquor license from the Villarreal Rida Country Club for the fundraisers on the following dates, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, August third, twenty twenty-two, September eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the application for one-day liquor licenses from Homestead Harvest for a farm-to-table dinner, wine tasting from June, from July twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, from five to eight P M.
Second. Any discussion? Sounds like a fun night.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve Southeastern Regional Service Group DPW Supplies Contract Award Sheet commencing July first, twenty twenty-two, for a twelve-month period.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the request from the Southeastern Regional Service Group to order contract to W B Mason for paper items for a twelve-month period commencing July first, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, make a motion and discussion and possible votes for the bid for the water main replacement project.
Mr. Haynes, is that why you're here?
I already remember all that.
Second, sorry. Discussion.
Just wanted to bring forward, over the last couple of years, the town has been, in public, which we've been working on a project that was, funds were appropriated at town meeting for the replacement of the water main on Maple Ave, Hobart Street, and Folsom Ave. As a, the project went out to competitive bid as a result of the, just flat-out insane pricing inflation we're seeing. The original engineer's estimate for that project was one million seventy thousand. The, when the bids came in, they came in at one, well, in cumulative with construction administration and all the costs, the anticipated cost is one point three million. So we've had to scale that project back, which we did in the bid documents and the apparent low bidder and with research done on that to verify everything is Dig It, Excavation Corp. Their references came back well, but we've had to scale the project back to only do Union, I'm sorry, Maple and Hobart Street to Union Street with the funding that been allocated. So we saw about a thirty-five percent increase in contract, which is above and beyond the engineer's estimates, which typically have a variance in them of, you know, seven to twelve percent. So, and this is all conditional upon the contractor actually even being able to get the pipe, do the work. But with that, you know, we're before the board with the recommendation. So there were five bidders for the project, lowest bidder being Dig It, which is an excavation company out of South Dennis, to one point two million. So we went from six hundred and ninety-four thousand to one point two million for the project. Yeah, it's a.
They're going to adjust that for gas.
They're going to come all the way up.
I'm going to come from South Dennis, I know. But they were the lowest bidder.
Wow.
Went through the entire competitive advertised process and.
Okay. Charlie?
And I'd like to say, you know, let's wait and see, but we don't anticipate seeing anything going down.
It's not going to go down.
So I don't think there's any benefit to doing that at this point.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
All right.
Hold on.
All in favor of the award, say aye.
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 So there should be a letter in your packet with a notice of an intent to award, and then
Yeah.
the contract documents will follow once we've processed that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting.
Montelacross.
Great. Announcements, Rebecca?
I don't have anything, no.
Town administrator report.
On the opioid funding, there was a advisory from the Division of Local Services about the mechanics of the funding in that, right, the state legislature, I'm hoping, is going to allow us through, you know, one of their laws, to set up a special fund where all that money will automatically be deposited, and we can use that. Where it stands right now, however, is simply another local receipt, just like local aid is. We can set up a stabilization fund, which we can do this September or this fall when we have a special town meeting, assuming the legislature doesn't get its act together on the other option, in which case money received at that point, we should be able to put in there. But at this town meeting in the fall, we'll need an article to appropriate the money that we are receiving, hoping this summer, that it can then be directed towards those efforts. We haven't obviously worked out with everyone how regional an effort will be doing and such, but I think the point will be that we'll, rather than the money just sitting in the general fund available for anything, we'll have used it for, or set it aside specifically for that. I checked with the town accountant and the town treasurer. Neither of them said that we had received it before June third, which was actually good news, because then it would have been turned into free cash. Simply we'll have things to do at the fall town meeting in connection with this. Rich Messina will be in next month to talk about the stipulations as to the limits of what we can use that money for, in that obviously it's directed specifically for various types of programs. It's not, you know, it just says that it's not, really shouldn't be treated as a local receipt that could be used for anything. Well, it has to be directed towards opioid prevention and ameliation and such. Hybrid meetings legislation, I put that on your table just because it came in today.
It was even this today.
Yeah. So we've been able to have hybrid or all virtual meetings with the pandemic. The legislature, the current law allows us to do that until the end of this week. The Senate, they were to include this in the budget, but of course, the budget, they haven't gotten themselves together yet. So the Senate passed a separate bill to extend it to December of twenty twenty-three. Basically, no changes, just the date changes. The House, for some reason, made a decision, we're not going to do exactly that. We're going to now do even more. We're going to say, first of all, it only extends to next March, around the December. But second, starting in April of twenty twenty-three, you're going to have to have a hybrid meeting for every single meeting of every single board and commission that you have. Doesn't matter what it is, you'll have to have a hybrid meeting, and you'll have to set it up so that if you're going to allow the public to participate in the meetings, then you'll have to allow participation by hybrid, means someone is monitoring the screens and seeing if somebody wants to speak and all that. The MMA is recommending that we contact our legislative delegation and say, please, please, because now we got two bills again. We got the House bill, we got the Senate bill. They're going to have to meet to work out whatever compromise. Do not do this. Just keep it simple with the Senate bill extended. If you want to discuss the point of changing how meetings will operate in Massachusetts in the future, fine, but don't throw this on the cities and towns right now, even though it wouldn't go into effect until April, but that's this fiscal year, which means we'd have to spend money on technology and personnel and everything else.
Yay for another unfunded M V.
Yes, yeah. And probably end up using the ARPA money for that purpose. So I'm asking for a recommendation for the board to contact.
I think we should absolutely get in touch with all of them.
And we make that very strict, and you're kidding us, right?
Yeah.
You know, just, and I, actually, I'd use Carol's words.
Now, I mean, and now, they didn't require this two years ago, but now?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'd use Carol's words. No more unfunded M V. Put it in there.
Okay. Home rule petitions, speaking of legislatures.
Carol's the expert on rats.
Yeah, not anymore.
I'll get to rats in a minute.
Yes, please update
Okay.
our many viewers on the home rule.
Right, so we have three. We have North Bedford Street Sewer District, which now has a bill number, forty-nine seventy-one, intent the Committee of Municipalities and Regional Government waiting for a hearing. Second one, acceptance of subdivision roads, that's forty-nine seventy-two, same board waiting for a hearing. Withdrawal from civil service, this is where it gets fun, number forty-nine seventy-three, Committee on Public Service. So I get a note back from Al from Senator Brady's office on Friday saying, oh, by the way, now, the Committee on Public Service wants this entire document about how you're going to operate, you know, every single clause and everything else.
Yeah.
So I've, you know, I did contact our police chief, and I contacted our deputy. They're going to be asking their colleagues, have you submitted anything like this yet? Because it seems, what it turns out to be is it seems to be very new, like, weeks.
That they haven't asked for this before, but now they are? Great.
I contacted my colleagues on the South Shore. Nobody has anything at this point. I contacted the Mass Municipal Human Resources Group mailing this Zippo. So, however, Clifford and Kenny is working on a prototype document, because obviously, they're working with a number of communities, not just us, who are going through this process. And rather than reinvent and reinvent and reinvent the wheel, we'll just do it once, it looks like. But that will, I mean.
Why do we have to be the one to chisel the wheel out of the stone?
Well, we get copyright credit, and we'll ask for royalties, I guess.
Eternal fame.
Yes. Rich, rich and famous contract.
Yeah.
Yes. And so, we're, the process will continue, but it's, you know, if anybody, even if they held a hearing next week, it wouldn't matter, because they wouldn't have this document, and they're not gonna say yes. And what I asked Al, you know, I asked Al the same thing. I haven't gotten a response yet, was, has anybody successfully done this? So we have a guide as to what, what needs to be in this document that they will then say yes to. Because the way I'm reading it, it's actually more robust than civil services right now, in terms of what they want individual communities to do. So.
All right.
While we're on that subject.
Rats?
No, we haven't got to rats yet. Oh, well, yeah, we're talking about the Golden Dome. I had conversation today with Senator Keating, Senator Timmeltie, Representative Sullivan, Representative Cassidy, trying to get all of this stuff out. Even though Walter's leaving us, he says he will do his best to knock on some doors to see if he can get these things moved. The only one I didn't have, pack from unfortunately, was Mike Brady's office, who is the chair of the Public Service Committee, who can push this stuff through. So I will again contact his office tomorrow. But the other three said they will do everything in their power to get this pushed out. But they're not positive if any three of these would have to be resubmitted.
Right.
If they are not passed out by, when they walk out of here on July thirtieth.
I mean.
But each office is checking that, and they said they won't be back to us by the end of the week.
There's also always a possibility that as long as there's no opposition, that they could approve these in an informal session.
Correct.
I mean, the civil service one, I would have my doubts about. The other two are very, shouldn't have any opposition from any interest groups or anything, so.
Jerry Cassidy said that there are just so many towns now trying to do the same thing, like getting out of civil service, and this is what they're doing. They're trying to make sure that everyone understands what this really means. He said it's nothing to do with East Bridgewater. Everyone is going through the same. Again, he wasn't too sure if anyone, not, no one in his district, I don't believe, has been approved, but he hasn't had any requests either. So he doesn't know how long this request for all these different items have been there. Now he can go on to rats.
Well, thank you for contacting them.
So why did it have to be rats? We don't have, we had a call in Mrs. LeFlin's office the last couple of weeks about our possible rat infestation problem in one neighborhood here in East Bridgewater. Talking with the Board of Health, the conclusion, they went out and looked at the same thing. They thought it probably was a situation that the rat hitchhiked on somebody's truck. I'm not joking about this, in terms of being in a mulch pile, for instance, or something like that. Little sign. So, and we, and we don't, we don't have, and so, you know, the properties in the area are well-kept. It's not a situation where people are leaving garbage and everything out there. But the only thing that, you know, in talking with Jean Marie, was that we could send some literature out to that area, specific area, and say, here are the things you can do to help prevent rats. You know, close up, make sure all the, you know, there are no openings in your house along the basement area, for instance. Don't leave food out, et cetera.
Stop feeding the birds.
Possibly, too.
That's, that's.
That's a problem, too, yeah. But we don't have a program here to do something like that. So if the, were the board's okay, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yep, that's fine. We went through it at our house, what, four years ago?
Yes, we did. We all did.
I know. Well, that's when I found out that the town didn't have a policy. But bird, feeding the birds was probably the biggest attractor, I think, for us.
And I don't have anything else for the public session. Obviously, there are a number of discussions for executive session.
Okay, great. David, any other board discussions?
No.
Nope, I don't have anything, so I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to adjourn open session and go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, firefighters, superior officers, clerical, DPW dispatches, COA director, fire chief, and further pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, as the chair has determined that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position in a matter involving Rida Farm versus the town of East Bridgewater, Bourne versus East Bridgewater, Collins Lupine Lane versus East Bridgewater PFAS, so to close executive session meeting and not to return to open session.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Dave Shidi, aye.
Carol Julius, aye. Great. Have a good night, everybody. We'll see you in August.
Aye.